Business and we'd like to thank all of the public who are joining us via Zoom. Welcome. We'd like to call our first item 2.0 is the invocation. Like to ask if council member and pastor or co-pastor DJ here, if you wouldn't mind, give us an invocation, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Lord, we just thank you for this great opportunity to go about doing the citizens' business, Lord. We, we know that there's no big us and little them, that we're all one. And we just thank you for that, Father. We ask you to help us to be on one accord and that we would do the right things in according to the citizens' business. And Lord, we just thank you so much for what you are doing for our city as you are keeping our numbers down with COVID-19. And we thank you for what you are doing for the nation and for the globe. We continue to, we continue to solicit prayers to you and we continue to ask you, Father, in the name of Jesus, to continue to look over not only our city, not only our neighborhoods, but take care of us globally, Lord. And we submit all of these requests and even the ones that are just in our spirit realm. We solicit, solicit those to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please unmute the mayor.
Okay, I was going to say I'm not here. I see us. Okay.
All right, can you hear me, council? Can you hear me? Okay. All right. Item 3.0 is the pledge of allegiance. I guess we will just do it in place. We'll repeat. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Item 4.0 is the announcements and recognitions. At this time, I will defer to council member Dawkins. You have one minute, sir. Councilman Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted the council members to know that the Cape Fear Regional Theater folks are making masks for us and a lot of other people. And I've got my pretty mask on. And once I picked it up, they said, wash it, which I did. And it's a great mask. So thank you to Mary Kate and all the great Ella and all the great folks at Cape Fear Regional Theater. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, very, very good of them.
Thank you, sir. Thank you to the good people of Cape Fear Regional Theater. At this time, we will acknowledge council member Ingram for a brief announcement.
Thank you. So really quickly, I, I have in front of me 2020 Senses Response Toolkits that I've been reviewing. I just want to make sure that the citizens are aware that we are below count for the senses and we have to make sure that we're doing all we can to respond. So I just want to give you a brief, brief reminder that you can respond via phone by dialing 844-330-2020. And then you can respond online by going to 2020senses.gov. Call at least five of your neighbors and tell them to take the senses. And if they've already taken it, five, five more and have them do the same. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Ingram. Council item, we ask that you consider approval of the agenda. We would like to always give a few minutes for a COVID update. We are trying to coordinate that with our manager, emergency management director, Mr. Bullard, who is certainly busy, but if he can join us, if, if we can make provisions to accommodate briefing of COVID here in the community, that would be great. And that's for your consideration. Item, item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda, council. I'll look to you for a motion. We have, we have a motion by assault council member Kinston by hand, second by council member here to approve. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor by a show of hands, council? All right. Madam clerk, that is unanimous. Oppose us, there are none. Motion carries. Item 6.0 is the consent agenda. Is this?
Yeah, he just spoke.
Okay.
He just raised his hand.
All right, council member Wright, did you have a question, sir? See him muted? Council member Wright? All right, I'll come back to council member Wright. Council member here.
Thank you, mayor. Just probably more so for me than anyone, any, if you look at item 6.06, and I know that's about replacing, am I looking at the right one? I may have called the wrong item number out, but it's the one about, oh yeah, that's it, about replacing our buses. And whenever a bus is going, goes down on the route or needs to be replaced, the new bus that we're purchasing.
So, so hold on, council member here. So what would, would you want, you'd like to pull this item for a separate discussion? Can you, where, where the consent agenda?
Okay, I'll just, yes, okay.
All right, I'll, I'll put you down for item 6.06. Back with us? Did you have a question, sir?
Yeah, I'm back, mayor, but I didn't have a question. I just hit my hand button and didn't bring it down, so I'm good.
All right. Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. And I would like to pull 6.06 for further clarification from council member here. And I know council member Banks McGlaughlin had requested some items pulled. So council member Banks McGlaughlin, if you unmute, unmute, maybe you can explain the ones you wanted pulled.
Yes, most of them I got the answers for, but I just want to get some clarity for 6.08.
Okay, so council member Banks McGlaughlin, that a second with the approval with the exception of 6.06 and 6.08?
Yes.
All right, so there's a motion by council member Dawkins for approval with the exception of those two items. There's a second by council member Banks McGlaughlin. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your hands for votes.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, mayor. I'm sorry. My apologies. I'm sorry, not 6.08. It'd be 6.010, sorry.
Okay, all right, so you all probably have to restate that motion for clarity for the clerk. Councilman Dawkins?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve the consent agenda and would like to pull 6.06 and 6.10. Is that correct?
6.010?
Yes, sir.
010.
Okay, and that was a motion by council member Dawkins. Is there still a second by council member Banks McGlaughlin? Councilman Dawkins, you had another question, sir? Okay, council member Banks McGlaughlin, is there a second?
Yes, it is, second.
Okay, all right, so there's a motion and been properly seconded by council member Banks McGlaughlin. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes in favor. All those in favor? All right, madam clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item 6.06, council member here.
Had a question from whenever the buses, and I know this is for the funding for bus replacement. Whenever the, whenever buses are replaced, if a bus goes down on a particular route, is the buses that are, that the funding is for, are they for that particular route that goes down? Or will another bus from a, that's in the inventory slide over? That's a used bus and the new bus goes to a particular route? How, how does that, how does that work?
We have Randy Hume on as well. Jennifer and Brooke, if you could answer councilman Behare's question.
To Hugh?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'm here. I'm trying to make sure how this works. Our buses rotate through the routes, so if a bus goes down on a route, yes, we move another bus into that. But these buses come in and they will be rotated, they will be rotated on different routes. You know, they won't always run the same route, the same, the same day, I mean, the same route every day.
So because of the rotation, then the new buses that come in doesn't specifically mean that it goes to the route where the bus? Okay, I got you. You said they're rotating. I understand. Thank you, sir. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council.
All right, thank you, council member here and council member Hugh. Item 6.010, council member Banks McGlaughlin?
Yes, my question, I just wanted staff to just explain to the viewers the transfer for $250,000 that they can just kind of elaborate and, because I know this is talking about software and just to see what type of software be used and just the capabilities, how it'll make a positive impact with our city's infrastructure, if they can just elaborate on it.
Mr. Hewitt?
Yes, thank you, mayor, and thank you, council member Banks McGlaughlin. Sheila Thomas Ambat is on, and Sheila, if you could expound upon that, you or Kristoff. And after that, mayor, we did not take a vote on 6.06, as you know. And I think that Mr. Dawkins also may have been trying to signal that as well.
Okay, tracking.
This is Sheila, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so good evening, everybody. So what this is basically is we currently have appropriated the operating budget, $250,000 for an asset management plan. And this is transferring that to a capital project portfolio. And so what it does is, is to build the framework for an asset management system for the city. So if you look at cities our size in general, many cities are building the framework for asset management within the city. What this allows you to do is to understand your assets, where they are, to understand the inventory of them, the age and the condition of those assets. And in the long term, it allows you to make, to build a funding tool that can fund these assets based on the criticality of them, based on when those assets will fail, so on and so forth. Now, many cities are building them. If you look at, for example, Canada as a country, they made it a sort of an ordinance for all municipalities within, within that country to have asset management plans for each of the municipalities. In our case, and to build one is very, very expensive. It's extremely expensive, in the millions of dollars. What I'm trying to do here is we already have in place software that tracks our assets on an individual basis. For example, we have a pipe software called WinCan that our street maintenance staff use on a daily basis to get the condition of your pipe. They go in and they camera the pipe and they get the condition of the pipe. However, that software sits by its own little self and its own little world in the desktop of the individual doing that camera work. Likewise, we are proposing on what we call a pavement management system called MicroPaver that will essentially take in all of your pavement condition and put it on a desktop of an individual that's getting that information. What we're trying to do with this asset management tool here is to build what we call integrations whereby these individual softwares that are sitting on, on different applications for different divisions within public services will be integrated to our larger asset management tool called CityWorks. So how does this really impact us? Well, for example, you know, when we have a street cut, when we have a street cut in the city, we have, right now, that's actually not being tracked in CityWorks, but ultimately it will be tracked in CityWorks, which is the tool by which we understand that there's a street cut. However, that street cut information is not transferred to your pavement management system, which is called MicroPaver. That is a special, that is a special integration you have to build whereby your pavement management system can talk to your city work system and vice versa. This eventually allows you to make more intelligent decisions on, from one system to another. And so in, in this case, when that street cut happens, it transfers that information to MicroPaver. Therefore, you don't have to wait to analyze your entire city before you can make an intelligent decision using MicroPaver. That's one example. Another example would be if, for example, my street maintenance guys have gone in, one team has gone in and gotten pipe camera information for a pipe system. Well, another team may be going in at a later time to do a, a repair on that pipe. But they wouldn't know that this camera system and this camera footage already exists because that system does not exist in our main system called CityWorks. When this integration happens, the team that goes in to repair that pipe will now know that there was camera footage that was already done and therefore they need to do X, Y, and Z in order to repair that pipe. Hopefully I not talked too much on the subject. I will open it up now for questions.
You were very informative, Ms. Sheila. We appreciate that. You do have a couple of questions from council members. Councilmember, what else?
Thank you. Ms. Thomas Ambat, very quickly, can you just give a brief synopsis of what type of infrastructure this management system will, will be responsible for keeping track of? You, you touched on it in some places.
Right, so I want to, I don't want to.
Can you just very briefly?
Can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, so I want to be sure that this is the basic system. It is trying to build those integrations. I don't want to misguide the council by letting, leading to believe that we have a very robust, sophisticated system. But the basic systems that I'm going to seek integration for are your pavement management software, MicroPaver, that we are yet to purchase. And once that's purchased, integration of MicroPaver to CityWorks. The second will be the pipe camera system called WinCan, which already exists with the city to integrate that with CityWorks. And the last system, we're getting ready to, to do what we call a, you know how we go back? Every three years, we go and we actually assess the condition of our roads. This year, when we go, I've put in a new initiative request for assessing the condition of our roads. But this year, I'm not going to do just the condition of my road. I'm actually going to take it a level above and to try and get a cost factor for not just the road, but everything outside of the road. For example, your sidewalk condition, if you have a, a street light, does it exist there? So on and so forth. So as that van goes down the road, it can capture not just the road, but it can capture everything within 360 degrees of it, or actually 180. So when I do that, I'm going to try and integrate all that with CityWorks and within this asset management system. But that's, that's my dream wish. That's my wish list, so to speak. At the very basic, I'm going to work on MicroPaver, which is your payment condition, and WinCan, which is your pipe condition. Was that clear or do I have to speak more?
It's clear. As a, as a, the second part of my question would be, so is this a similar system? Or is this, is this, if, if we had to liken this to something, when we have the conversations about stormwater management solutions and we talk about being able to put money into having a solution for what the issues were. So would this be kind of the issue about, for example, bonding for infrastructure for our, our street maintenance and for our sidewalk? Is this going to be a tool that's going to help us to be better equipped to know exactly where, when, and how we need to be moving forward with expanding these funds? Is that sort of the purpose of this type of a system?
It is. So I want to, I started, I don't know if, I didn't hear your full question because you cut off. This is only, this builds the integration piece. Can you hear me, ma'am? This builds the integration piece, but it doesn't bring in all the data to integrate with. So in other words, you still have to go get the camera footage. You still have to go, you know, get your condition before it can integrate. So that's why these systems are very expensive because I'm not going and getting the camera footage, but I'm making sure that as I get the camera footage, it will be integrated to make more intelligent decisions. Does that help?
Councilman, what else can you not affirm? Are you good?
Thank you.
Okay, council member here.
So that's what I was, my button was for.
Can you repeat that, sir? You were muted.
No, I was getting ready to just remind you that we hadn't voted on the item I had pulled. And I don't think you, we did it on item 601 either, just a reminder.
Form a vote for 6.06? Or motion?
Yes, sir, mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve consent item 6.01 and 6.06.
All right, thank you. And there's a second by council member Dawkins. Any discussion on the motion, council? All right, I'll look to you for your votes for approval of those two items. All right, so those who, hold your hands up, those who approve those two items? So those who.
I, I didn't hear, what are we voting on? Which item?
I, the consent. The two consent items that were pulled, 6.06 and 6.010.
Together?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, so council, I'll need you to do it again. Those who are in favor of the motion that was made by council member here and Dawkins for approval of item 6.06 and 6.010. Councilmember Kinston? Okay, madam clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item 7.0 is the public forum. Although we are viewing via Zoom, we still are, are able to accommodate some of our citizens who have signed up for the public forum. Also, I'd like to make the following announcement that because of the COVID-19 adjustment in our meetings, all quasi judicial hearings, such as special use permits, are continued until such time as the state of emergency restrictions have been lifted. So we will make more announcements about that at a later time. Now it is time for a public forum. This is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, the forum will not last any longer than 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city of Fayetteville. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's, speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you are here to speak or join us by conference on these items that may be on tonight's agenda under public hearing, we ask that you reserve your comments till the public hearing. So when we recognize you, or your name is called by the city clerk, we're asking you to please state your name and home address for the record. And we will keep time typically. When you're at the podium, we have a time process that says that when the time changes from green to yellow, or when the light changes from green to yellow, means that that is your 30 second warning. You have 30 seconds left to speak. We will track your time. And at this time, madam clerk, if you can call our first speaker.
Mr. Mayor, we have two speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. Tom Keith. You have the opportunity to speak, Mr. Keith.
Good evening, Mr. Keith. See, unmuted. It was one second, Mr. Keith. Okay, Mr. Keith, can you hear us? Mr. Keith, can you hear? All right, madam clerk, we'll go to the next.
Our next speaker is Mr. Rakim Jones. Let me find him. Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones, are you there, sir?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
Hey, how are you doing, everyone? My name is Rakim Jones. My address is 147 Delmar Street, North Carolina. And I really came to speak about marijuana legislation. Because recently I was reading in the news about Virginia just decriminalizing marijuana. And recently, and recently I was stopped by police, routine traffic stop. Of course, they, they said they spilled, they smelt marijuana in my car, so they searched my car. No marijuana, no harm, no foul. But as they were searching my car, I decided to speak with the officer and just ask like, why marijuana is still basically illegal here? Though it's decriminalized, I read it's decriminalized, even though you can still catch a misdemeanor. Wow, I could probably drive, well, according to the laws now, I could drive right to the border and cross over and smoke freely. And I see all these CBD shops popping up, but nobody really actually goes to consume CBD. And me being from the Charlotte Bonnie Dume area, I have a lot of friends who have low level marijuana charges that stop them from getting jobs and everything else. So it's more so of a question that I had, would like to pose is the one, what we could possibly do to change that and possibly get some of these records expunged? Because it's, it's getting out of hand to where people would really would rather go out here in the streets and then to go get a job or try to take their chances with a marijuana drug test. But while you still got people out here popping prescription pills, the liquor store is deemed essential. However, a person can't smoke a blunt in North Carolina. But in California, marijuana is deemed essential. So I'm trying to figure out what is exactly the difference and why, how can we move forward from this? That's it. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Jones. We, we typically, and the reason we're not ignoring you, usually during the public forum is where you or the citizens make your statements to us and the council typically doesn't engage you. But just as a FYI, that law change would need to take place on the state level. So you may want to also solicit some of your state representatives, but thank you for joining.
Yes, and I honestly, I even, I sent an email to everyone on the, all the council members and you included, Mr. Mayor. And I would like to know, how can I get to a state level to get my voice heard?
Well, if I've got an email, I'll forward yours to your state representatives for this area.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Keith, are you with us? Let us, let us, let us check you back. We'll try to unmute you. Mr. Keith, can you hear us? Hey, Mr. Tom Keith? All right. Mr. Keith, was that you, sir? Is your phone on mute? Do you want to uncheck, make sure your phone is not on mute? Okay, all right, we're having some connectivity problems with Mr. Keith. Wanted to make sure we didn't overlook you. All right, so at this time, we will conclude the public forum. Thank you, madam clerk. Council, that concludes the business tonight. But as I said before, Mr. Bullard has joined us and we would like to give a few minutes for Mr. Bullard to kind of update us on the latest about the COVID in the city of Fayetteville. Mr. Bullard, are you on the line, sir?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you, mayor, mayor pro tem and council. Can you hear me?
Yes. I'll get you after this.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm glad to be here. It's unfortunate that we're approaching the Thank you, thank you so much. Um, I'm glad to be here. Um, it's unfortunate that we're approaching the month mark under the state of emergency for the COVID um situation we have going on, but there are some promising evidence on the landscape. Um, the numbers tonight, um, per the state, we have five thousand twenty four cases statewide, a hundred and eight of of those cases have been deaths across about ninety two counties. And in our county of Cumberland here, we have ninety active cases and two deaths. Um, I think we're making progress in headway. We saw some uh graphics yesterday that the actual flu experience this year, it started on a giant downward trend thanks in part to our social distancing, our hand washing, and our overall mitigation, kind of a collateral effect, if you will, with this virus, and we're pleased with that. Um, we just hope that this curve will continue to flatten and things will slow down and we'll get it out of here. Um, promising news, I'm also told from Cape Fear Valley that they have less than twenty patients that are inpatients for COVID. That's a good, good news for the community, because that way our medical surge problem is is not as it is in some of our other sister cities, um, which is very concerning in the Mecklenburg area and the Wake County area. Um, we're looking at lifelines on a daily basis. We're not pleased that the food, water, and shelter and the health and medical are are still where they're at, but we're doing everything we can with our partner agencies to, one, work on a solution for the unsheltered out there and non-congregate sheltering. Um, today, we actually got the Fayetteville Area Convention and Visitors Bureau connected to county emergency management and public health so that we can make sure that we're not missing any opportunities. Um, I'm pleased also to report that the county, um, with the state's um involvement still has some designated al- alternative care sites that might pop up in our area if they're needed. Um, right now, it doesn't look like that's the case, and we're very pleased that that's the case, that they're not le- leaning at least towards use, but nevertheless, we have a plan. Um, with that being said, I'll be subject to your questions.
Did, uh, I will acknowledge, uh, Councilmember Wright, I'm not sure if it was related to your
No, it's not re- related to that, Mr. Mayor, I'll come back to it once he finished.
Okay, Councilmember Hare, did I see your hand? Is he unmuted? Councilmember Hare, if you can, uh, alright, yes, sir, now you're unmuted.
Okay, okay, thank you, sir. My my question was, what was that overall uh death count for the state? You said one hundred and what, sir?
It was one zero eight, sir, one hundred eight. And aside to that, is so far this year, as of last week, because the flu numbers run a week behind, we have lost a hundred and sixty five North Carolinians from the flu, just for context.
I did have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, Councilmember Hare, you finished, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you both.
Alright, Councilmember Wright?
Uh, yes, sir, um, is there a stat on homeless uh citizens pertaining to the COVID um virus at this time? Uh, have we uh found any homeless people that have been uh come up positive with the virus as of yet?
Insofar as I know, sir, the answer to that is no positives yet. But I can't speak for Cumberland County Public Health, they're the actual primary source. But in my relationship with them and the data that we trade, as of tonight, at this moment as we're speaking, I know of no cases among the unsheltered and the homeless.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, council. Council, any other questions for Mr. Bullock? Alright, Mr. Bullock, we thank you so much, sir, thank you for your service, thank you for uh the great job you're doing, keeping our community informed and safe during this emergency situation.
Uh, just quickly, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to go back to, uh, just to make a suggestion to see if this is something that uh we could do, maybe with the city manager or whatever. Uh, Mr. Thomas Keith did not uh get a chance to speak, I don't, I don't know him, I don't think. But um, it was not due to any fault of his own, I don't believe. Uh, is there any way where we could get his statement uh by way of uh email or statement uh uh from this gentleman, so his voice could be heard?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If we can, and um, in in checking, we have had correspondence with Mr. Keith um this uh recently, um, as as last week, and he was having some issues with illegal dumping on property that he owns, and he may have had other items that he wanted to talk about as well. Um, but um, we had um worked to address those, um, but he did want to speak uh to the council, and if we get a statement from him tomorrow um that has any additional detail, we will, of course, forward that to the council and we'll respond back to him at that time as well.
Please do, thank you so much. That's it, Mr. Mayor, for me.
Okay, alright, council, uh, entertain them, oh, Councilmember Hare, you had a question, sir? Oh, 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 gotta unmute you. You're fast.
I'm I'm not Yeah, it must be being muted on the other end. Uh, just want to follow up on what the city manager was just saying. It, sir, if you get the, uh, if you would, please send us the information of what the city was doing, doing or planning to help property owners, illegal dumping, that's something that I had sent you months ago. I would greatly appreciate uh having that, I think all council members might information, a lot of illegal dump across the city. So whatever that plan was, I would greatly like to hear that. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Hare, so, uh, Mr. Hewitt, did you confirm that? I know we had a lot of uh interruptions.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alright, council, if there are no other questions, entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
Leading the adjourn, have a good evening, you all.